Looks like everybody's there. It's seven o'clock. Okay, without objection, this is the City of Prospect's regular council meeting of September 21, 20. First item on the agenda is consider the approval of seven cents of minutes. All of those were previously distributed. Does anyone have additional corrections?
Hey, Chris, can you make?
I will.
Thank you.
I have a very minor correction on the August 17 minutes. On the second page, the very first column under new business, it reads that, the last sentence of that paragraph reads, "There was general agreement that the city would see little or no cost reduction by doing so at this time because while electrical usage would go down, fixture costs would increase." A more accurate way of saying that would be they would increase for five years. And thereafter, we really don't know what the cost would be. So the way it reads right now, it sounds like they would increase forever, but it's just for five years.
How do you want it to read, Greg?
If it's okay, right after the word increase, if we could just add four, five years, and thereafter, we don't know at this time.
Okay, can you do that again? I can't write that fast, darling.
I'm so sorry. Sure, happy to. So.
Why don't we say after cost would increase? Why don't we say four, five years?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we couldn't understand you.
I hear that all the time. August 17 minutes, under new business, talking about streetlights. In the last line where it says costs would face, Greg would point out correctly that they would increase four or five years. So I'm asking you satisfactorily to add the words four or five years.
Yes.
Well, I have a question. What is, are the minutes as written, do they represent what was said? And now you're trying to explain them? Is that what's happening?
No, good, good point, Frank. But no, we did say that. There was, if I recall, a long discussion, so. But we did say that we'd go up for five years. We did.
Actually, the ones who said it, the two that are being quoted, Tipton and all, are the ones that said that there'd be no cost reduction for five years. And then we had a long discussion about, well, after five years, would it go down? And their answer was, we don't know. And I think that's what you just said, Greg, wasn't it?
Close, Sandra. I thought I heard you say that they would go down for five years. They would go up by $7.37 per fixture per month for five years.
They wouldn't go down. They would not. There'd be no cost reduction for five years. Correct.
Right.
So are you offering that as an amendment?
I think we just need to.
Or correction?
I think we just need to add four, five years at the end of that paragraph, and I think we're okay.
So it would read that. Go ahead, Mayor.
Corrections. And that, I would suggest that we simply get a motion through this entire set of minutes.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the ayes have it there. Next item on the agenda is Metro Scott Reed. Is he present either physically or virtually? I take it he's not.
Scott was intending to attend in person. I can't tell if he's in there or not.
He's not.
If he arrives later, maybe we can bring him in at that.
And is there a way that Rusty can check to see if he's on, but just not showing on our screen?
He'd be shown on the screen. Even if he was on phone.
Okay, disregard.
The next item are either Don Lawson or David May. They're physically or virtually.
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Mayor's report.
Before we go there, could you tell us why they were coming?
Wanted to explain two things, one of which was the city's ability to use the money that we got from the state. Basically anyway. We had a meeting with them when they were here during the audit. Discussed that with them, and they agreed that we treat it as income from a grant. So, for me. The other thing I talked to you about is the item showing the pension as a liability on the audit, but since they're not here, I'm not going to try to do it for them.
Thank you.
Okay. My update, there's so much going. Since Mike Lesh has left, I've kind of swamped with various code enforcement. That's one. Chief Sharard is working with me on find someone qualified to do that. So that is an update on that situation. With regard to LDG, Prospect Code, I've updated you on that previously about the oral argument on October 21st and the other side demand to take a whole bunch of depositions whenever that may happen. On the other end of the city with the Section 8 apartments, I have been participating with residents who live immediately around that location as well as with Mimi Runyon, who I brought in very graciously, although it's not in their territorial purview, been immensely helpful. What this is about is a study and report that are required by law since this is a federally supported project. And it gets into pact or potential impact of the development on either parties that are on the National Historic Register, even if they're not on it, that they're qualified to be. Metro Government is obviously trying to, as they put it, move this along. But the Kentucky Council, the head of that is a friend of Mimi's. They have given us a lot of information. It's my understanding that folks intend to hire a consultant from a list that is supplied by the Kentucky Commission as well as from the discussion I heard hiring an attorney for them. That conversation went for minutes on Sunday. It's ongoing and there's a potential roadblock in front of in regard to that. We'll see where it goes. All I have to report.
Mr. Mayor, Scott Reed has arrived.
Oh, let's hear from Scott. Thank you very much. Scott, are you there?
Camera's right here. The camera's right here.
Hi, Scott.
If you want to talk, if you want to talk into the camera, that's perfectly fine. Just grab, he'll grab your mic, and you can stand right there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would you like to sing?
I was gonna say, you like a song? Just make sure it's on.
Hello, everybody. It was nice to see everyone. Hey, I'm here. Sorry that I'm a few minutes late. But I wanted to come out and, first of all, it's been a while since I've been here. Under extraordinary circumstances, I hope everybody's healthy. Everybody looks good. We all look a little funny with our masks on, but we gotta, I guess we gotta do what we gotta do. What I wanted to do was to come and tell you a little bit about what's been going on at the metro level. And a whole lot's been going on at the metro level. It's been an interesting four or five to six months. Last week, you may have read that the Metro Council voted 24 to 1 in a no confidence vote on Mayor Fisher. Now, originally, that started off as a resolution, and it is a resolution. And resolutions are non-binding, as you know. But it started off as a resolution that was proposed by the Republican Caucus. It was sponsored by the Republican Caucus. We did not have any Democrats that signed off on that. And what it called for was, well, first of all, it was a line-by-line listing of things that we felt like the mayor had been derelict and goes back to the Explorer case from 2017 to the Tark case, which is ongoing, which is a real mess. To the current Breonna Taylor case, which we feel as though the mayor hasn't been forthcoming and transparent in getting details to the Metro Council. And we are an oversight body. We're a co-equal branch of government. So we, after hearing from our constituents, and trust me, I heard from many constituents that felt as though the mayor let the situation downtown, especially the initial weekend, get out of control by issuing stand-down orders when we had a chance to control things. And it just escalated and blossomed from there by not enforcing certain ordinances, for example. And I asked Chief Amy Hess this myself on the telephone. Did the Black Lives Matter group have a permit to demonstrate at Jefferson Square? And she told me no. Well, by ordinance, they should have a permit, and not only that, they should have proof of insurance. They didn't have either. So whatever damage has been done, if there has been, to Jefferson Square, the city will have to foot the bill for. And believe me, I am a firm believer in the First Amendment right to protest. No problem whatsoever. And I saw some protesters out here in Prospect. There were protesters in Norton Commons. There were protesters at the summit. All part of my district. No problem at all. But when you start not enforcing ordinances and selecting ordinances you're going to enforce, which ones you're not, when you allow caravans to go up River Road, I know that by the time it had gotten here, maybe it had become a little bit more tepid, but I know for a fact that when it was closer to Zorn Avenue and moving its way to Prospect, it was very unsafe. And LMPD was nowhere to be found. We felt like we had to act, and we did. And we felt like we would get some Democrat support once it came to the council floor. However, Councilman Winkler, Marcus Winkler, proposed an amendment that removed the language of the mayor stepping down and instead inserted language that had several layers of police reforms, et cetera. I voted initially no on the amended resolution, as did the Republican Caucus. It did pass, though, and it was my opinion that rather than vote no on the entire thing, which still included the language of no confidence, it was in my interest and the interest of the council to go ahead and vote yes. So it did pass with a 21 to 4 vote. It did not have the teeth that the original resolution had, but, you know, my dad told me a long time ago, sometimes a half a loaf is better than no loaf. So that's where that stands. And several people have contacted me and they've contacted Debbie and they've asked, you know, why did you do this? And I said, well, you know, it was the best that we could come up with at the time. So that is the situation with regard to that. And the situation downtown, we are hearing that there may be a decision tomorrow by the AG. You may have heard the same thing. All signs seem to be bad, so you might want to tell people downtown maybe to be prepared for that. There are some things going on. Mayor Evans mentioned the LDG lawsuit. I have been, I don't know if I told you this or not, but they have set a date for my deposition, which I think they are moving forward with that. And by golly, it's gonna take me all, I'm looking forward to that. I asked John Hanley, I said, well, how long should I, you know, be over in a couple hours? Oh, no, no. This could last all day, and I'm thinking, what kind of questions could they ask me all day? But anyway, that's that. So I'll just talk, the fact, findings of fact and revisit that. I will also tell you that over the past three, three and a half years, I have done everything I can do to protect the sanctity of suburban cities, including the City of Prospect. And sometimes that doesn't fly over so well with certain people on council. All very good people, I might add, but they just look at things differently. There are certain people that would like to do away with suburban cities altogether, and they've made that known. As long as I'm on the Metro Council, that won't happen. I won't, I won't ever vote for that. And I will always fight for all 14 suburban cities that are in the 16th District. I have the second most suburban cities in the 16th District. Number one is Paula McCrady, District 7. But I feel very strongly about home rule. I feel very strongly that suburban cities should be able to contract with the trash collector of their choice and the snow removal of their choice. They should be able to have their own police force if they so desire, if it falls within the law and their purview. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I also came here because I haven't seen you in a while. I wondered if you had any questions for me. So have at it. Come on, Don. Yes, sir.
It really isn't up to or Metro Council whether suburban cities do or exist. It's up to the state legislature. Is that not correct?
That is true. That's true. But you still have people that, you know, sound the alarm to the extent that it's their way. That was all part of merger before even the suburban, as you know, Mayor. The suburban cities had to buy into this before merger was ever voted on. They had to agree, and the League of Cities has made that very clear, too. No, I don't think it's gonna happen. I'm just saying that there's rhetoric, and there's always gonna be rhetoric as long as people on the Metro Council feel as though that they could make more money for some of these agencies. They could tax you more if there were no suburban cities. So, you know, you hear, I've been on the Budget Committee for four years, and there's always this undertone that, boy, gee, if we just didn't have the Harrods Creek Fire Department, or gee, if we just didn't have St. Matthews, then, boy, you know, we could. It's never, it's always implicitly, it's never, I should say, it's never implicitly stated. It's just always an undercurrent. So do I think it's gonna happen? No. But I'm just saying that there are always people that are wishing for, I would say that.
There is a counter to that.
Scott.
Yes.
Back around 1950, that St. Matthews asked Louisville to annex them, and Louisville said no.
When was this?
Around 1950.
Okay. Well, I'm not surprised. Sure.
Actually, that's what I was trying to say. They may think that it would be helpful to them if they got rid of some of these things, but the bottom line is these entities, including the City of Prospect, do a better job than Metro. Cheaper on any one of these issues like trash collection, leasing. Our per-unit costs are lower than Metro's, but our service is, in the case of trash, is more than double what Metro does.
I don't deny that, Sandra.
No, but you could feed it into the people who think they're gonna make money. We cost them money.
Sure. And, you know, I would argue that, you know, certain areas of the city that would like to become incorporated should have that opportunity. That would have to pass, state law would have to change for that to happen. But I would like to lobby for that as much as I can because there are certain areas, Okalona, for example, that is, they would love to have their own fire and their own police. Norton Commons even, but so, but that would require a change in state law.
Scott, this is Greg Gilson. First of all, thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, to the extent that you can, what in the world do you think all of these the payments to the Taylor family and the repairs to our city, what is that going to do to our budget? What kind of things do you see from a budget perspective, either this year or in the near future?
Of the 12, that's a good question. Of the $12 million, $5 million of it will come out of the general fund. Okay? There's a good portion of it that, believe it or not, was already budgeted for, and there's a portion of it that's paid for by insurance. So however, I will tell you this, that when you start combining, the Explorer cases haven't even been settled yet. So those are all, those are all still pending in civil court. Those are gonna be enormous. Those will dwarf this, trust me. They will. So even though insurance may pay it, the city is still on the tab for the insurance premium. But what I can tell you is that $5 million of this is going to be coming out of next year's general fund, and, you know, in a tight budget, particularly with this pandemic, sure, it's gonna hurt. Absolutely. The only thing that I would say, and, you know, Michael Connel came in and spoke, it was not in closed session, so I can say this. Spoke to council last week in committee of the whole, and that the $12 million was arrived at as a settlement because they felt as though the city had offered lower, that they just basically met in the middle. Came also with various police reforms. My question is, and I realize that a civil case, I'm not a lawyer, but a civil case is not the same as a criminal case. A criminal case, you know, basically, it's about you know, the burden of proof is much different. However, I would have thought that the civil case or the settlement would have been announced after the AG made his recommendation. So that's a question that I have, and it's a question that I hope, and I'm not on the Government Accountability and Oversight Committee anymore. It's something that I would hope that Chairman Ackerson and Chairman, and Co-Chair Piagentini will ask the appropriate people. So to answer your question, yes, some of it is actually coming out of the general fund. And sure, I mean, like anything else, in a tight, in a tight budget, something's gonna have to give, so. Hope that answers. Thank you, Greg.
Scott.
Frank.
What, what if any impact will these hits to the budget have on LDGs, on the availability of money to fund people like LDG in affordable housing and senior housing? And I ask that because a lot of publicity about federal money, HUD money going to pay rents. Are those in the, are those coming from the same funds that would normally go to subsidize, you know, this housing debacle?
No, no. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is separate from that. And that's already been budgeted this year. I think, I think it was $5 million that went into this, this next budget, or this current budget, I keep saying next budget, which was down from, I think, the $10 million. What I will tell you is that and a lot of people don't realize that, but the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is actually bonded money. Okay, so basically what they're doing is they're borrowing money to give it away, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But so, at some point, when your receipts are down and when your general budget funds, your projections are down, the bonding companies or the ability to issue bonds has to decrease as well. So I cannot answer that, but that's a good question because next year, you know, it's already, it's already in, it's funded this year, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So they have that pool of $5 million. Next year, I don't know.
The bonds have already been sold for that money?
Most likely, yes. I can't answer that. I really don't know. But my guess is probably. But I can find out.
So budget, budget problems, you know, higher bond rate, lower bond rate?
What I'm saying is that it's less likely that you're going to, my guess, is be able to sell bonds at as good an interest rate with your general fund and your income and your receipts being down. So will the city be able to borrow the money at the same rate with the same sort of cheerful readiness as that we've been doing over the past several years? I don't know. We'll know that, I guess, going into next year's budget.
But these potential civil suits would have a certain impact on that, I would think.
Well, it depends. Civil suits with regard to the Explorer case most likely will be covered by insurance. Again, the taxpayers on the hook for the insurance premiums, and there's always a chance that if somebody's paying out, I have no idea what they're gonna pay, that they're paying out hundreds of million dollars. I'm just throwing that out. I have no idea. That insurance carrier could cancel you, and you're stuck trying to find somebody else. But sure, it's, everything is going to be really tight next year. There's no question about it. This year, you know, you already had, half of the, half of the year already finished when COVID hit. So to me, the real impact is going to be next year.
Does anyone ever question the prudence of bonding money that's given away?
Sure.
What happens when?
I question it all the time. I mean, several of us do.
It doesn't strike me as prudent.
Well, what I'm told is that we bond at a healthy ratio, a healthy, that there's a certain formula that they use, that we don't exceed it, that we're in line with other cities. However, I know for a fact that the City of Indianapolis, for infrastructure, pulls that money out of their general fund.
Well, about a year ago, I looked at the amount of money that was bonded for all the cities in Kentucky, including Louisville. And that was a very large number on my very small computer. It was huge. And I can't help thinking at some point in time, people are gonna have to pay.
We not only bond for, before the Housing Trust Fund, we bond for infrastructure. We bond for roads, sidewalks, everything.
Really interesting.
If we didn't, it wouldn't get done.
I'm afraid as a fiscal conservative, I don't.
I am a fiscal conservative, too. And I ask these questions every year during budget. And I'm told by the mayor's people that we have a healthy bonding ratio and that all is good. Essentially.
Scott, the $5 million, the $5 million for housing, any idea how much is already committed?
No, but that's an easy thing to find out. And I can find that out, and I'll get that to the mayor. How about that?
That would be great.
Okay.
For this current, this year?
Yes.
Okay. That's not a problem.
Thank you for getting River Road and Wolf Pen, Dave. That's much nicer.
Well, that, just, just so that you, thank you. Just, oh, that was a box culvert. I've learned more about box culverts over the past six months. Do you know what a box culvert is? Probably everybody does but me. But basically, the retaining wall was cracked and the box culvert may have collapsed, so Public Works thought, well, we'll do it in July. It's going to be a two, three month repair. We'll do it in July when it's nice and dry. Well, it rained all July, and once they got into the digging, they also uncovered a spring. So, they had all kinds of problems. It was not their fault. The good news is that we did get a right-hand turn lane, and we would not have gotten that had they not been out there repairing it, because we couldn't afford it. As a standalone, it was $300,000. But I will give credit where it's due, and Debbie Carroll worked with Public Works on that.
And he took out a study, an interim study, also called the House. At the time, she said, if we could do it, yes, if we could do it, she said, yes, we'll get it to do it. It was a gamble. Everything had to come together at once. They had to get LDG, they had to get their work, there was a water company, they had their work, everybody out there. And for them to pave it, right when they were paid Wolf Pen rent, well, the end, we really didn't want this to be done, but we got it done, so I was very, very happy.
The microphone is turned off. Turned off.
Can you hear me?
The battery might be dead on it.
Is it green light?
We need it. No, it's, your battery's dead, I bet.
Well, nonetheless, it's much nicer.
Nothing, the battery's not on yet.
There we go. How about that? Can you hear me? What I was, can you hear me now? Okay, great. If you have a chance to, if you have a chance to talk to Debbie Carroll, congratulate her because she did a great job on this, and I cannot tell you how happy we were when this thing opened, because we were getting all kinds of very upset people.
Well, on the other hand, just like him, I can't tell you how many people have said, Wolf Pen and River Road, for the first time in more than 10 years, look wonderful.
Yes. Well, infrastructure and paving, that's, you know, I, I think that the two most important things of local government, public safety, number one. In my view, the mayor hasn't done a very good job with that, and infrastructure, number two.
And our third one is trash collection.
I'm sorry?
Our third one is trash collection.
Correct.
Because we do so much more than other parts of the city, so, yeah, I hear you.
Correct, and I live in Greenspring, and they do a fantastic job too. So, any other questions? Thank you. I know you have business to conduct, and I appreciate it, as always. I'm happy to hear everybody or see everybody, happy everybody's healthy. Chris, you've been, you've been quiet? Uh-oh.
You're, you're on mute, Chris.
But I look, look forward to, look forward to having lunch with you and the mayor again when we can.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Next, we're going to have a report from Parks and Rec.
Thanks for your time, Scott.
Someone from the Parks and Rec Committee President to make a report.
No, from Parks. From Parks, we're only doing the written report.
There's, there's, is a, Link Ranger gave us some pictures, and I, I went through the Hare Creek Trails today with my kids and some friends. They put up a bunch of picnic tables right at the end of the parking lot. I missed it by a couple of days. I had lunch in the exact spot, but other than that, the parks are looking good.
Well, that's attractive. Now, this is, this is where?
This is right at the end of the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
So it's immediately available to anybody that can find a parking spot down there.
It looks very nice.
And then, one of the other Eagle Scout projects, really quickly, put a, put a border and put, and I know you guys can't see it, put a border and put some stone down, the blue trail, about the half mile marker, and it's really nice too, so it's not washing away anymore. That still yours? You can keep all of them. I've saw them personally. That's it.
I've never seen so many cars had parked along Montero Drive as I have recently, and they're all visiting the park.
Sunday was very busy. Yes.
Is Lee Tousie with us? He got in a little while ago. I don't know if he succeeded or not.
Does not appear.
Okay. That leaves a history book report.
Um, in regard to the, the library, we have got a very active following, and the books have been coming in, in rapid order and going out quickly. So things are going very smoothly. We probably can consider having a meeting of the library board, which we don't have, but anyway, the workers, the volunteers, we can get them together because we need to start talking about having a book sale. We have almost no storage left, so we're going to have to do something in the future. We can talk to you about that at the next meeting. In regard to the history book, you had talked about the development on 42, up near the Jefferson County line, and the history book is sharing some of its information with the people who are writing the report that you talked about. We have, we have a foundation for a lot of what they're looking for. They'll still want to go out and get their report, but they won't have to start with Adam and Eve, and we are already talking and reviewing information with them in regard to that. So the history book has value beyond what we have talked about in the past.
Yeah, I take the blame for that, Sandra.
Yes, you do.
Sandra, I'm the one that told them to get.
He told me you said that, yes, he told me that very clearly. No, and I, you needed to. We do have a lot of information we can help them with. So, thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Police report.
Okay, I'll be pretty brief. There's not a lot that's going on. The house checks are down a fairly decent amount. I would attribute most of that to COVID because I think people are staying on, they're not traveling. Last year, there was about 1,500 for the month of August. This year, it was down to 1,200, so it was down a little bit. Our reports are, which is a good thing, they're down considerably compared to the, compared to last year. We have 107 reports that have been taken so far this year. In a normal year, we would take 300. So it's a pretty sad state of affairs when our total reports are 107, and Metro Police have 120 homicides. I was going to leave that for Scott, but I didn't want it depressing. Let's see. No. Scott was alluding to the fact that there could be a decision coming down tomorrow. We've not heard anything official. We had been told previously that if they could, they would offer us 48 hours notice. I never had any faith at all in that. I do belong to a group, about two months ago, we anticipated that there would be problems, so all the suburban chiefs, we got together, we've met several times. We actually have a mass paging group on a special app, and we're all notified at the same time. Some test pages went out today. They were trying to verify whether or not there was any information coming about tomorrow, and they, there were some indicators that something could be in line. They were trying to verify that, and as of now, they've never sent anything else out. So I don't know whether there's a lot of misinformation going out as to whether or not tomorrow will be a decision day. There's other things that lead me to believe that there won't be, because I'm not so sure that a grand jury has actually met yet. So, I don't know that a case has actually been presented.
Does a case have, does, does a case have to be presented for the report to be exposed?
Say that nobody's going to be indicted. A grand jury would have had to have heard the case, and for him to be able to say that he's presented it to a, to a grand jury and that there's been no true bill.
See, I'm wondering if the report would go that far.
Well, if he's going to indicate that nobody's going to be indicted and he presented it to a grand jury, they would have had to have heard the entire case. And as of late last week, no grand jury had been impaneled whatsoever. So, the only thing I do know for fact is that LMPD put out a statement to the media this afternoon advising effective immediately, they have canceled all off days and all vacation days. So that would, in that, I believe that's what Mr. Reed was alluding to, is why they think something is imminent. So, but that's all I have at this time.
All right, thanks, Jeff. In the new business, in the first order of new business, is municipal order 4-2020. It's an order revoking the city's participation in the Commonwealth's Multi-Channel Video X-Collection Distribution System and authorizing the mayor and the Department of Revenue. I think we might want to have a little bit of discussion on that, and I wonder if you would educate me or as to what that's about and why we're considering it.
Okay, you may recall that, yes, you may recall that last year, we considered this. Getting a lot of background, so everybody got their, non. Okay. Last year, we considered whether we should do this, and the bottom line was, about half the city's, about half the city's not, we decided, we didn't care to see what the figures show, the questions that we go into the state system, which is what we have been doing for the last few years, and let them, let them, they take a sizable portion of money and keep it or whatever, we just do it ourselves. The bottom line is, we will receive about $17,000 more a year if we do it ourselves. Very simple procedure. There's only one provider that we would have to modify, and that provider would either apply to the state, actually, the state would take, give us a lesser amount, or we could just let Spectrum know, actually, and if we, that, we'd receive about $17,000 more a year. It's a no-brainer. Any questions? I'm getting horrible.
I move that we accept the resolution as written.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The resolution is. Next, we have this reading of ordinance 592-2020. What do you want to do? Do you want to move into the floor for discussion first?
Um, road aid.
Road aid budget.
Actually, I'd like to move it to, I have a question, so I'd like to move it to the floor for discussion.
For discussion, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you couldn't start?
Actually, the, the only question that I have is, and Randy can help me with this, but as we were going through the general fund budget, there were some items in there that we took out because they could legitimately be charged to road aid funds, and because the amount of money in here is a global amount, I'd like to be reassured that those were considered in coming up with this global amount. Because we will be coming back, Harold and Don and I have been working on paving now for over a year, and we will be coming back in the next month or so with a priority list of roads and to be paved and maintenance to be done on roads. And I, I, we're going to have to come to some kind of understanding of roughly how much we're going out to bid for. So, for example, one of the things that comes to mind are the Bridgepoint signs. Did we consider the fact that we're going to pay for the Bridgepoint signs out of road aid funds?
Where are you looking for an answer to this?
Whoever put this ordinance together.
Sandra, nothing has changed on this in terms of the dollar amounts that you see from the original version that was presented in May. The only thing that has changed in what the estimated expenditures, expenditures are going to be spent on.
Okay, so I, I could be wrong, but I would seem to remember it was roughly $60,000 that we had cobbled together in different places, like I think there was some salt in the general fund. I know the signs were there, and so those will be taken out of this $300,000, correct?
Yes.
Not taken out, expensed against.
Thank you. That's a much better choice of words, yes.
Yes, as Frank put it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That, that was the same question that I had, Laura, just to make sure that those items that we had had originally in the general fund that we discussed moving to the road fund because they were appropriate expenditures for that, that we, we've taken care of that with this, with this amount and haven't left that out there somewhere unattended. Thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to move this for a first reading.
Second.
So, the first reading.
First reading of ordinance 592-2020, an ordinance establishing a budget for the municipal road aid fund of the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021.
Thank you. Take care of that one. First reading of ordinance 601-2020. Again, do you want to move it to the discussion before you have the first reading, if at all?
Does he want to have any discussion points, or do you want to?
This is, this is the second reading.
No, this is, no. Go for it.
I move, I move that we bring the ordinance number 601, series 2020, to the floor for a first reading.
Second.
Oh.
First read. I'm sorry.
You need a vote, motion, all in favor.
No, we need to.
I need to, I need to read it first, Don, I know, we need to vote first, so we need to vote, okay.
And because it's an ordinance, it should be a roll call vote.
Yeah, but Frank made a motion.
Yes, he did, and we should vote on it, and it should be a roll call vote.
On that, Sandra, you don't need a roll call vote on that.
It was, it was a first reading, not a discussion.
No, no.
We moved it, we moved it back to the floor for discussion.
No, no, his motion was to a first reading.
For a first reading.
All right, well, we'll do a roll call for everybody to be happy. Frank?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Frank? All right, unanimously passed. Someone, first reading, please.
I'll, I'll read it. City of Prospect, Kentucky, ordinance number 601, series 2020. An ordinance amending chapter 39 of the City of Prospect Code of Ordinances, adding definitions, clarifying qualifications, appointments, and conflicts of interest of the regular and alternate. alternate members of the Code Enforcement Board, explaining meetings and minutes, enforcement proceedings, and hearings of the Code Enforcement Board, adding an additional function serving as the first step in the determination process to request for waivers, exceptions, and variances, and incorporating the penalty sections of Prospect ordinances under the purview of the Code of Enforcement Board.
Thank you. It's now at its first reading. And the last item under new business, it's reading of ordinance six zero two dash 2020. Does anybody want to move that to the floor for discussion?
I'll move it for our first reading.
Second.
All right. Frank?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Frank? All right. Someone's reading, please.
First.
Wait a minute. Before you do that, before you do that, Chris and I had a discussion about this, and I, I believe that it's got a defect, and I want to throw the ball and let him explain.
Okay. What the mayor had pointed out is that you don't say specifically how much income you have received. You say additional unanticipated revenue, but you have the expenses, but you don't have the income. I think you care very simply by putting in an amendment on it that says after prayers at the top, unanticipated revenues, just put in the sum of $130,000, $198,49, and then you balance. You show that your revenue is the same as your expenditure.
In other words, what is that, as part of your amendment, what are the new expenditures? I think you need to have a revenue line in that amount so that you.
So it shows that you're allowed to do that.
Our revenue in the same amount.
Is that the second whereas? After the second whereas and another line?
I would do it after the first whereas. What you say has received a revenue comma, and I would insert the sum of, put that $130,000, $198,49, so it balances with. You don't have to say, just, just say what it is.
Okay.
Okay. We agree.
A revenue line.
Just add in the number on the first line, right after received.
Right.
Just add the $130,000.
Right.
$198,000.
Where?
And that'll fix it.
First line.
Whereas the general fund of the city of the Prospect has received additional unanticipated revenues.
In the amount of that, so that it balances.
We're doing it in the whereas, not in the body.
Correct, correct.
I agree with, I don't think you can do it with.
Good alternative.
I think you have to put a line, budget amendment, a revenue line equal to the, that you're spending.
Okay. Well, then we would.
So you're saying on the chart portion, John?
Okay, there's an issue with that because there are.
The part, the part.
Some of this money that's coming in.
What about, we have a miscellaneous income, a line item for revenue.
But we don't know that that's where they're going to fly the money coming in. For example, the one on the franchise.
I don't think we have to know. What we do have to do is balance it, and it's miscellaneous income at this point. You don't care whether, you know, it's from fines or book fees or.
Okay, but that isn't what Mr. Gorman suggested, which I thought was a very good alternative.
Chris, can you restate? I'm sorry, but you and, and the mayor still are cutting out somewhat.
Right.
So if you can restate again where, how we need to fix this.
Well.
I don't think you can do it, whereas. I think you have to actually put it in that box.
I don't, I don't think the problem with that, Mayor. I think, okay, let's do it both places. Where I said, for the first whereas, at the end of the line where it says unanticipated revenue, put a comma, add in the sum of $130,000, $198,49. And then we could go down to general government, original budget.
Whatever the revenue amount was in the original.
Can we just add a column on there?
Yeah, we have to add a column. Here, here's, if we do, let me explain this. I have the discussions with Randy, the official copy of your budget. That will eventually be linked up. What we need to do is incorporate this within that. If we have the sense of it, which I think that we do, we can put it in the, into the general government line and put that amount and make it balance.
Okay.
We have the.
I'm amenable.
Well, I'd like to move that we accept Mr. Gorman's recommendation.
Second.
Explain it to me. You're gonna put it in whereas.
You're gonna.
Two places, Frank. We're gonna put it in the whereas, and we're gonna put it in the, where it says general government, original budget. We're gonna have a revenue column as well as the expenses.
All right. What I'm getting at is Pacific's 4407 is miscellaneous revenue, and we can add to that.
That's where they're going to put the money that's coming in, into that. We don't need that.
This is a budget. It's not, you know, this is, this is an exact science.
Chris?
Yes.
For my clarification, I'm, I'm fine with what you're saying. Since we're passing this tonight and we haven't published the budget yet, I'm assuming, then will we incorporate this into the published budget?
Exactly. That, that's hope to do that at the same.
Okay, so we don't have to publish it twice. Okay.
Correct.
So he's saying, so can I, can we go back and look at the book?
And Randy, since we have done it this way on a first reading tonight, it would not be a, any substantial change for the second reading, and we, we could do it that way.
Okay, okay. That works. I'm, I'm amenable to that.
Okay.
So we need to, did you move?
I move that we amend it according to the way Mr. Gorman suggested.
Well, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. So we need a vote on the amendment, and then we can go to the first reading.
Um, before I can interrupt, hold on, hold on. We have to publish the original budget ordinance within 30 days. So we're either gonna have to have a special meeting for the second reading on this amendment or publish twice.
How mu, how much time do we have, Laura?
Um, I think we're at day 13 at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not, I don't know how the rest of you feel. I'm not opposed. We need to have a quick special meeting in order to save the money for a second publication.
Eight oh five tomorrow?
Yep.
Looks like they sent on the floor to amend this document as Chris just discussed. Frank, how do you vote?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Okay, that amendment passes. We need to basically give it a first reading as amended.
Correct. I move that we give it a first reading as amended.
I second that.
I'll be happy to read it.
It's been moved and seconded.
We need to vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
All right.
Would you like me to read it?
I would like, yes, please.
Okay. City of Prospect, ordinance number six oh two, series 2020. An ordinance amending and modifying the budget for the general fund of the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, to add funds to line items for professional services or certain legal services and engineering analysis of Putney Con.
Thank you. That concludes the new business. Is there any other business? Any comments? I think that concludes our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor, or whoever gave us the masks, Kentucky League of Cities.
Rusty, thank you very much. Rusty, are you there?
Are you getting this money?
Yes, that's.
Ron Watson?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Rusty, are you there?
Yes, sir.
We all thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and they kept cutting, cutting out. I'm not sure why, but the mayor and Chris, I was only here and ever so many.
That happened.
Together, but it was not ideal. No.
Thank you.
It was a beautiful sunny day, so I would have noticed.
I didn't even notice it. At night, I mean, people walk out, they're like.
I know. I've got one of those, and I also had it in my glasses, and that's how I made those things. I turned it off in the summer, but I use it all the time because I can't even see at night in the morning.
This was my suggestion.
That was very nice.
And we literally sat almost in that, I guess, five people's families, August 22, on the grass, and then like two days later, I suggest that because they're looking for eagle style project. Those are extremely easy to do. Build them a home. Put in some rock and fit. So many people wanted to go down there, kind of hang out. Everyone I've asked, so I've taken, carried 30 different families down there and hiked with them all for fun, right? And I took a bunch of kids, me and a set of kids today. Fortunately, one of them was little.
Nice.
Much older than Molly, but too small. She's like, come on, just carry me.
Oh, wow.
Cause the only place where you guys, we should wait a spot to stop and sit.
Actually, they should take the one out of here.
Yeah.
They spent $7,000 Friday this year, and I don't know what it was for the parks. And I cannot, I can't tell it to you. I cannot. We've probably been told. I just can't figure it out. Can't see between my glasses and these things. I can barely read. Anyway, it's $7,000. These have not been totally mined up yet. I'll go there close. I don't know. I'm thinking, I'm thinking first of all, that whatever it was, we thought it was a good idea.
Well, that rock project was like $6,500 or something. This is just finishing up.
And this is just in the last.
They, they put the rock down, then it was.
They wouldn't have gone a hundred percent already. Anyway, we, we need to find out because we don't want them to get in trouble.
No.
Well, and I wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah. It was fun.
He's a bright driver because he can actually look at things at the same time, park and ride, which a lot of us don't.
Yes, yes, he is.
UPS loads. Uh huh. Yep. No, obviously a talent for that. Could be a taxi driver.
I know, I should. I'd love to get a tourist.